All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:01. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call when you're ready, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Any conflict of interest declarations from anyone? Seeing none, moving on. Any changes or deletions to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. We're into public comments. Any person wishing to speak on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Do you have anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, great. We'll move on to the student liaison report. Do we have that on iPad? If not, you can email it to me and I can read it. Did you? Okay. Sorry, let me get on it real quick. So tonight, the students at Cloverdale High School are having the Mr. Eagle Pageant Contest. It is a very fun event and I'm sad that we couldn't be there. The kids have a great time with it. So, our student liaison is part of it, couldn't be there, so she passed me on her report. Says last week on Monday, and this is her, I'm gonna read it verbatim. "Last week on Monday, the Jefferson announced that the police department will start their lunch with a cop program this month, in which they will choose two random Jefferson students to go to McDonald's with an officer, so that they create a positive interaction between them in a friendly and informal environment. Additionally, the PTA is trying to create a Read-A-Thon to encourage more students to read. Since last week, the high school has started having games for the spring sports, and today we'll have Mr. Eagle, where it is a yearly contest between senior boys and they compete for being Mr. Eagle. Unfortunately for the Washington, I wasn't able to see any updates that I could get since February 14th." And that is her full report. So, thank you, Iotta, and I hope you have a great time tonight. Moving on to presentations, F1, the promotional introductions, and I'll let Chief run through them as he wishes. Uh, can we move it to the end of the calendar? I told them 6:30. I thought we were gonna go a little longer than this, but this is quick. This is quick. So promptness check. Moving on to G, the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Do you have any items that we would like to pull as a council? Seeing none, any from the audience? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion that we approve the consent calendar as submitted.
Thank you. We have a second from the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 5-0, thank you.
Moving on to new business, I1, the draft city art program. David, is that you?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, our community development director, Assistant City Manager Kevin Thompson is gonna provide an overview and presentation on a draft city art program. The focus of the program is on utility boxes in the public right-of-way, but would also entertain conversation with council on extending the program to the private property, in addition to murals on public property. This has been something that has been discussed at the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee for a number of meetings. Just a little background in your report, which Kevin, I know is gonna go into more detail on. We've seen these types of public art programs be developed by various cities across California, some of which is tend to address some of the, kind of, the blandness of utility boxes within the city, but also to kind of promote arts. Two examples that we provided, and there are many across California, but the Town of Windsor has a utility box paint program, and if you happen to visit, you'll see a lot of their utility boxes near their, near intersections and signal the intersections, you'll see them painted by various artists. The city of Eureka has somewhat of a unique perspective. They've developed as a, part of their economic development program, a strategic art plan that is intended to leverage the considerable contribution of arts to their local economy. And they've also developed a, what they call a Eureka Box Art Exclamation Mark program that is intended to enhance the vitality and attractiveness of those features within their community. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Kevin. Kevin's gonna give you, kinda walk you through a presentation overview of the proposed program. We are seeking your feedback and input, and not asking council to necessarily adopt it tonight, but on a couple of key policy points, we just wanna make sure we get council's support and then bring it back.
Thanks, David. Is this working?
It is. You probably gotta turn it toward you versus side of you.
Mike, can you go to the next slide? So, as David kinda gave us a little bit of a background, I mean, this really is coming from the community. We've had several community members wanting to put murals up, and Councilmember Bagby has been a big proponent of this for a long time, as she attended a seminar regarding the Eureka Program, which is really an outstanding program. And we were able to have city member, city staff from Eureka come join one of our subcommittee meetings and give us a lot of background. But, so this is really modeled after the Town of Windsor and the city of Eureka, and it really is, it's kind of a first attempt here, and I'm assuming that this, we're gonna be amending this if the council wants to adopt this as we go along. But we do have a bunch of questions that we'd like to ask you and get your input on, as in the program. Mike, next slide. So, it's a way to form, it formally establishes a way for artists to approach the city about, again, mural, murals potentially, on the side of public, potentially public buildings or private buildings, whichever way we wanna go with that. And then our three, or I think there might be four, utility boxes. I might have to check with Derek on that, but I think there's, there's either three or four, but there's not a lot. One of the questions I'll ask you in a couple minutes is, do you want us to reach out to Comcast and other folks who have boxes to see if they're interested? Next slide, Mike. So, for the utility boxes, I mean, I do have a theme here, Sonoma County themed. This is all open to debate and for the council to consider if that's a theme that you like. And then there's a lot of just, you know, general rules about it, you know, it has to be able to be viewed by all ages. It can't have advertisement. They're required to apply some graffiti coating, which is a product that can be placed over the paint to help with graffiti. So, this is like the general framework for the utility portion of it. Next slide. So, here's the, I think the three locations. So, you have, you know, First Street and Cloverdale Boulevard, and then Brookside, one by Ace Hardware, and then there's one down on, by Santana in front of MGM Brakes. Those are the three that we control. They're basically for the stoplights. They're the control panels for the street light, the signals. Next slide, Mike. For the murals, it's kind of the same thing. We're gonna ask them to install, you know, the anti-graffiti. They're gonna have to require insurance. There will be an application process, so I'm gonna go into that a little bit when we get into the questions. What it's proposed right now is that if it is proposed for a city-owned building, it would be required to be put on removable panels, similar to the one on the old Cheyenne Building, and I have a couple pictures of that. There's some timeframes in there, and again, the eligibility, no advertising, no religious political messages, things like that. And then, part of the scoring criteria in the, in the program is that if they allow, if they incorporate community input, they're gonna score higher. And so, like, if they went to the school maybe and worked with the kids to come up with a, kind of, a cool theme or something like that for a mural, that would be considered a higher. And that's assuming that we're gonna have multiple applications and we're, you know, competing, or they're, you know, looking, we're looking at a bunch at once, and that's, again, one of the questions I'm gonna ask the council tonight, if that's how we wanna do that. But, next slide, Mike. So, here's the Cheyenne Building. I went and took pictures. You could see it's, you know, it's getting a little older, but it's on panels, so, you know, in theory, that could, those could come down and be revamped and rehung. So, I think the idea of the panel is a good one. It's just for ease of access and maintenance. Next one, Mike. So, here's the questions, and so there are some blanks in the program. So, I just, this is what we're trying to get your input on, and how you wanna proceed with this program, if you wanna proceed. And I'll just go through these really quick. In the case of Windsor and Eureka, they do have a small stipend for the artist. In Windsor's case, it's $500, and that would be reimbursable. So, they would put forth the money, do the project, and once it's completed, you know, we could set aside some money if we want, if that's the direction tonight. The review authority, now this is kind of one of the bigger questions. I mean, options are, we could have a subcommittee approve them, we could have the planning commission review them and make a recommendation to council, or they could just come straight to the council for approval. I think any, any one of those methods would work. The council may wanna be more involved with it, so you might just wanna have the council be the one to review it. So, the other thing is, in Windsor, they open it up once a year and everybody applies. So, then they all kind of get reviewed at once, which, you know, they do have over 20 utility boxes, and they come up with a theme, and then they review them. We could do that, or the option, the other option would be that we just kind of keep it open and anyone could apply throughout the year. You know, maybe that, if we proceed, if we go ahead with this program, maybe we do that for the first year, we just keep it open. Or, I don't know, I'm open to discussion on that. I think it could, it could work either way. If we do the, once a year, we'd have to really get the interest in the community so that everyone would be ready to apply, and they could all be reviewed at once, or again, we could just take them as they come. Location, we, part of this is, we could ident, you could direct staff to identify locations for potential, this is for murals. We could, you know, maybe make contact with private property owners, identify some sites, or we could react to applications that come in on various sites. There's certainly a few sites downtown. We walked around, there's a lot of, there's blank buildings that face, you know, north and south on Cloverdale Boulevard. So, that's another aspect to it. And the other thing with the location piece is, there may be other places in parks and city-owned areas that could be a good idea to potentially open it up for some artwork. So, we could go ahead and start to identify sites. That's another, another aspect we're looking for direction on. A theme, it says Sonoma County theme. I mean, we can, Windsor changes the theme every year for the utility boxes, which, you know, the utility boxes are easier to come in and just repaint, I think, versus a mural, but we could have some guidelines on the themes we want. It could be, like, it's written now, Sonoma County themes, that's pretty wide open. But, you know, I'd like to hear if you have any ideas on that. And again, the last one is kind of the addition, I kind of covered this one already. The additional locations, it could be us reaching out to Comcast, like, this box here is right on Cloverdale Boulevard at First Street, which seems like a prime example of something that could be painted. It's not our box. And then the other aspect to that would be, you know, looking in the parks if there's other places that seem to make sense. I have one more slide. It's just kind of the next steps, but, Mike, maybe, I think maybe we should just keep it on the question slides for our discussion, if that's okay with you, Mayor. We can go through those and have a discussion, and then my thought would be, if the council's in favor of this program, I'll listen to what you say tonight, make the amendments, and bring it back at the next meeting for adoption. Or, we could, you know, look at it again if you wanna do that as well. There is one thing I did hear, that there's a one high school student who would like, is, as part of their project for their art, their art project, they wanna have, they have to have one, a public art project and done by the end of March. So, I mean, I don't know if we could consider that and move that forward, or as a pilot, maybe. So, and that's in conjunction with the art program at, at Cloverdale High. So, I'll just leave it there, and maybe we can walk through these questions and go from there.
All right. Well, let's go around the room and see what people think. Well, Councilmember Bagby, you wanna start?
Yeah, I don't have any questions right away. I'd kind of like to hear the public input. I think Kevin did a great job of kind of presenting the first flesh and the basics, but I'd kind of like to, you know, hear from public input on this.
Councilmember Morganstern?
I think it's a great idea, and the only thing that I was thinking is Windsor has way more money than we do. Maybe we should offer people like $300 stipend instead of like $500 for utility lots or something.
Councilmember Walter?
Oh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions, Kevin. Is, is there a time suggested on how long the murals will stay on the buildings? Is it gonna be one year, two years? And then the same with the utility boxes. Are you suggesting we change them out every year?
Well, one way would be, for the utility boxes, I think they're a smaller project, so it probably would be easy for someone to swap that out. Right now, again, I'm referring to Windsor, because they do have a pretty successful program. They do them for one year, and then every year around this time, they open it up to, with their new theme, and they accept the applications at that point. That's open to discussion. I mean, I don't know that a mural would probably wanna be a longer timeframe, only because it's a lot of work, but we could do the utility boxes on a yearly or every two years basis. There's nothing in here about that yet, but that certainly could be put in there.
Well, you know, I'm in favor of the program. I think it's a great idea to get the community involved. There's a mural now on the alleyway off of First Street that goes up behind the post office. That's been there for, geez, as long as I've been in town. And, you know, it seems to stand up well with the, with the heat and the sun on it and all. And that's my cook's building. I'm not sure if that ever went through a process, but yeah, I like things like that. I think they'll, they'll enhance the downtown. And I guess we'll have to decide how long are those murals gonna go up for, two years, three years?
It'd be maybe two years, and then they can apply to have it extended. There's not anything currently in our zoning that puts rules forth for these. So, when the chamber did theirs on the building downtown, their logo, we did a sign permit, which was what we had at the time. It wasn't an exact fit on what they were doing, but it did work. This is more specific to the art, and I think it's, give us a little more control versus the zoning ordinance, which doesn't really speak to art.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions, Kevin. Like, when we're talking about the, the murals and the length of time that they, they stay up, and my question is, I guess, if somebody puts that much work into a mural, we keep it up for one or two years, and we remove it, what happens to that mural? Does, can we, do we store that mural? Is it an option to put it up later if half the community liked that mural, and their timeframe comes up and they say, hey, can we go back to the old one? You know, or does the artist keep it, which I can see that, too, but...
Well, that's, I mean, I, I think I like the idea of the panels, just because then they can, they can take it and put it somewhere else, or maybe we just put in a system where they can renew it, and we can review it every, like, it gets two years, and then every year it comes back, you know, on the consent calendar, or we can discuss it, whether we wanna just continue. But I'm open to whatever makes sense. I mean, if you wanna have some, you know, if it starts getting older and it's, maybe needs repair or something, have some kind of mechanism to do that.
I'm all for this program. I think it's awesome. It'd make Cloverdale, a lot of things in Cloverdale just look great, but also I see that we're gonna have an application, I think we're gonna have an application process coming for, like, the utility boxes one year. You're gonna start seeing people being like, hey, you know, I wanna jump in and get mine up there, and it's gonna be pretty competitive. And then the, the next thing on, on the utility boxes, I see we have four listed here, but there's a lot of them around town. One specifically I know has been hit pretty hard with graffiti up there at Vintage Meadows on Hildsburg and Foothill, and that's, I mean, that's a high-vis area. That'd be a great one. So, I just, you know, we have four listed, but I mean, if this thing takes off, I think there's quite a few utility boxes. So, I would say reach out to PG&E, Comcast, whoever we can get on board, the more the merrier when it comes down. And like I said, I think we're gonna have some competition on this, and first ones are gonna take off, people are gonna get used to them, and then all of a sudden, next thing you know, we're gonna get requests nonstop. So, I think reaching out to those two, I don't know how PG&E would be or Comcast, but if it's going good in Windsor and Eureka, I don't see why they wouldn't, you know, jump on it for Cloverdale, too. And then one more question. At Sonoma County, can we, would we be willing to let one of the utility boxes downtown have the Cloverdale High mascot put on it? I know it's not a huge art program, like, or, you know, artists apply, but it will fill the bill for a student that's in an art program at the high school to meet theirs, and obviously with council approval, make sure it's good, but it would be...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on Vice Mayor Wheeler's question about the Cloverdale Eagle, just to bring it to the attention of council, there is interest. We've heard from the superintendent on painting the Cloverdale Eagle on one of our, one of our water tanks. So, I don't know if that, that might suffice, but that is something that I think we will be bringing forward for additional conversation at the Joint City School Subcommittee. So, that'll, that'll be up for, up for conversation. So, I know there's, there's been some email correspondence with the school. I just wanna bring that to the attention of the full city council. And one thing on the timeline, just, just kind of for context, the, you know, for many years, the Sculpture Trail has managed the Sculpture Program in downtown. And those pieces, of course, are placed, you know, in the public right-of-way, and there's quite a bit of coordination with, with city staff to make sure we're not affecting accessibility and/or visibility, or creating any line-of-side issues. But ultimately, those pieces are the, you know, are owned by those artists. So, that just may, again, be something to think about in terms of this, that if we accept a piece of art on a mural, that the painter or the artist is still the owner of that property, of that, of that art, and it gets returned to them at some point, depending on the timeline that, that council establishes. So, that's just, just again, food for thought based on how that program operates. It doesn't have to be a six-month rotation like, like the Sculpture Trail, but ultimately, those pieces go back to, go back to the artists.
Just one more thing. And Councilmember Wheeler brought up a good point. I, I think the murals that go on the sides of the buildings should be on, on a board, in case the city ever has to take them down. Or, like you said, David, if the owner wants it back, he can just take it down and take it. And if the building ever needs repair, then it could come down, building could be painted, and it could be put back up. Kevin, I know in the beginning you said on, on public buildings, it would have to be on a board, but maybe we should make that across the board on every building. So, just, just a discussion point.
I, may I? Yeah, I think there's a little bit of confusion. There probably should be three categories. You know, one is utility box, one are murals on panels. I think that if they're public buildings, they definitely should be on panels. And then I think that for, because we already have murals on the sides of buildings, and those are so popular and so successful in other communities, I would hate to see a prohibition on murals on the sides of buildings. I think the, the one on the western-facing alley off of First Street, even though it's probably 30 years old, it's holding up amazingly well, and it's pretty, and it's pretty popular. I'd love to maybe, you know, see an artist who'd be willing to restore it, but I think we need to maintain, you know, that as an option. So, maybe we want to category, have three categories of, of these kinds of public art. It's also really important for us to establish that we're talking about both municipally-owned utility boxes and municipally-owned buildings and private buildings. And I think it's important going forward, too, to, you know, just going back to the city of Eureka's plan is more of a public-private partnership model. The city of Windsor is definitely a city of Windsor art project, and I think that that didn't get teased out too well in the, in the staff report, but that's a very important point to note. So, we're talking about two different kinds of programs and three different kinds of mediums. Where the city is concerned, you know, I think it's important that we maintain an ability to provide a stipend and a contract with the, with the, with the artists. Part of the Eureka Plan that's already in the pack, and it's already all drawn- Part of the Eureka Plan that's already in the packet, it's already all drawn up, is the agreements that are signed between the city and the artist or a private owner and the artist, and the maintenance agreement. And it's actually, I like that from an economic development standpoint as an important way to support our local artists, and also to recognize the importance of public art as an economic development driver. So maybe when we're, you know, before we start making decisions, first of all, I definitely want to hear more from the public. We need to define our terms a little bit more clearly than they are in the staff report right now.
I think it would be great if the decision-making process did come to the council, because that way we could probably get more public comment about which ones we're going to choose.
You want to have anything else?
We've asked a lot of questions. I'd like to hear from members of the public that support the program.
I'll go first. So when these are vandalized or get graffiti, is it the city's responsibility to clean it off? If it damages the art, who's responsible at that point?
It would be the artist. The artist would be responsible to maintain it in a, you know, good condition.
Are we going to set a timeframe? Because I know our staff gets on the vandalism, and I don't want to see, you know, gang writing downtown on someone's, on the box after someone's painted it, have the artists be non-responsive. And further, if these, let's just say, and just because you use the student as an example, if a student comes and paints this, and then they leave for college, who's going to maintain that box? Whose responsibility is it as it starts to fail? What do we do? I just want to set this up so, because I don't want this to be something that's an expense on the city. And so when you talk about, you know, giving a stipend, I think that we are giving them a platform. We don't need a stipend as well. And I know that this probably sounds like I'm a Debbie Downer here, but it's also because I like the blandness, and so I'm a little bit different. So I'm trying to keep my personal side out of this, because, you know, I'm black, white, and gray. So I like the fact that people want to do art. I have a hard time with the murals going on buildings, because that causes penetrations into new buildings or public buildings, and that's going to be a cost to us if something leaks. And we know, we just went through that in our city hall, and spent an exorbitant amount of money to get it fixed and repainted and sealed. And so for us to go put holes in it, even if it's putting standoffs on the side of the wall, it still is a penetration that will cause a leak in the long term. When you talk about religious art, what does that mean? How does that affect, because that, does that go towards holidays? Does it go toward, I don't know. I'm just trying to make it so where the public can hear everything that's written in here. I mean, everything else is very clear. That one, it's kind of gray area. So when we talk religious art, is it no Christmas, or is it no Deidreus Mortos? Is it, what do we do on things like that, other than, is it, you know?
That's a great question, Mayor. Well, usually, it's associated, it's a separation of church and state, right?
Right.
Not having a program that the city sponsors, which promotes kind of religion. Now, there's things like, we all kind of know the Christmas tree, things like that, that are not seen as now religious, because they're very common. But that's something if, that we'll have to put more details, like you mentioned. When the public's looking at this and saying, what can I do? The first thing they're going to say is, like you said, well, what about Deidreus Muertos? Is that somehow religious? But that'll be something we provide more details for. But usually, it's more of like, you know, you have things of specific Catholic religion or other types of religion on there that's specifically for religion versus more of the, we all kind of, Christmas is kind of something that's...
I just want to make sure we really define these things before we get caught here.
Makes sense.
And then with the Sculpture Trail, do we pay them to put their sculptures out?
The city does not pay the artists directly. We have, through the council's approval, funded the Sculpture Trail's promotion of the program. There's been, they have software that's available for visually impaired folks. And so we've supported that effort by way of, I think, a $1,500 annual contribution to the Sculpture Trail in general fund towards promoting that program.
Towards the promotion of it, but not paying the artists directly?
That's correct.
Okay. That's something that we should think about, because I think if we started doing that, we'd have more people lining up to get paid to put their art out. Any other comments before we open up to public?
Oh, yeah, I just want to, regarding the anti-graffiti coating, I just noticed, you know, on one of the things I wanted to make sure that staff is aware of is that it's on page two of the staff report. It's a little convoluted. We say one thing in the utility box artwork, and then we say something else under Guidelines for Murals, for who pays for what materials. And of course, the, you know, both sites, whether it's a utility box, a mural, or actually, if it were on a panel, it would receive, you know, coatings of the anti-graffiti, and it probably should be supplied by the city. So we just need to clean up some language for sure on those to make sure that they're really clear. The other thing that I would add, too, is that, you know, again, as far as how much the city would be paying artists, we don't, right now, we've only listed three, possibly four, utility boxes. So that's not a lot of utility boxes. The rest are privately owned. And in the Eureka model, the contract with the artist is with the owner of the box, the legal owner of the box. The contract with the mural is with the legal owner of the property. And it's a way for, again, it's an economic development tool to support local artists. So, you know, the share of what the city would be asked, it would be, we would just be covering the cost of the artist to work on our property. And of course, the, you know, if we were employing, you know, high school students or college students who are interested in doing utility boxes or murals, they definitely move on. Now, that's why the nature of those contracts that are in part of the Eureka Packet and are on those thumb drives, they are, I think they're just two-year contracts with like one refresh, where the artist then gets paid for the refresh. And then after a certain amount of time, those boxes then become available again. And again, I like the idea more of doing kind of just a rolling program, so you're not having to do everything all at once. But also, the onus for, you know, much of the maintenance, it falls on the owner of the box, so it's not exclusively with the city. It would be, you know, the utility box outside of Eagle's Nest, which might probably be very interested in having an eagle mascot. Or, you know, if I know Mo, she's going to want roller derby kittens on her utility box, if indeed she has the authority over that box. So the other example, local example that I've seen that was really intriguing was actually when I was, of a local program was down in Santa Cruz. And, you know, I know the staff has heard this story a couple of times. Santa Cruz has a utility box program where the owner of the utility box is responsible for contracting with the artist. But the framework is done, you know, by the city. The contracts and everything are laid out. The city does the stuff that it does well, which is lists of locations and guidelines and, you know, model contracts, and then private enterprise does the rest. But outside of the art store in downtown Santa Cruz, you'd think it would be this, you know, wild psychedelic utility box, but it's actually a Crayola box. And it's, so you've got just a green and yellow Crayola box outside the art store. So you know exactly who supports it and what they sell inside that store. And it's kind of an example of how the local shop owners and the property owners can, you know, express themselves or express their, you know, their own business using this program. I like the Windsor one, because it's really, you know, it's community-based. And obviously, it's, you know, it's, they're really focusing on community art. They've taken a lot of the financial burden, and they've taken a lot of the responsibility. But, you know, what I, the model that I originally saw was the public-private partnership with the community and the community members supporting local artists. And I'm kind of, I'm leaning more toward that, toward that version. But again, I'd love to hear what, you know, the Chamber of Commerce is here. I'd love to hear their input and kind of what they'd like, kind of program that they'd like to see.
All right. I'd like to open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make a comment? Please come forward. State your name for the record, please.
Hello, I am Sarah Hagan. I am the president of the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce. And just as far as the chamber goes, you know, we just want to beautify the area. More on a personal side is I personally really want murals to go up. I think it's beautiful. It attracts people into our area. Being a business owner, the more people that we can get coming from out of town, into our towns, enjoying the place, sharing images, bringing other people back, it just helps our whole economic community as a whole, anyway. One of the questions that I have, though, is I really like that the city wants to do their own program, but how can the public then do their own programs? Like, I know, like La Familia Sana definitely already has a program in place. They want to be able to do something. How does that work for their permitting? How does it work for anybody else that wants to be able to do a mural on their own business walls?
Kevin or David?
As I conclude all your comments, because I'll address all of them at the end of the three minutes, if you had any others.
I think that would be it. But thank you, thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you for, you know, talking about it, coming up with a program. I think it's going to be great for our community.
Well, the way it would work is you would apply through a very simple application and give some history about the artist, maybe some other work that they've done, and then some sort of rendering of what the art would look like. And then it would be evaluated by, it sounds like, the city council. And then once they approve it, then you'd be able to install it. That's, in a nutshell, that's how it would work.
But is an application separate than a permit, or is that the same? Would that be one of the same?
It would be the same thing.
Okay.
I mean, unless, if, there may be an instance where a permit, a building permit would be needed if it's something hanging on a building, just to make sure it's hung correctly. But I would think most of them would be covered through this application process.
Same application, okay.
Thank you. Please come forward.
That thing's a big thing. Hi, I'm Laura Payne Carr, and I'm from the, I'm representing Cloverdale Arts Alliance tonight. I'm the co-director of the gallery. And I just want to say that we get, as a volunteer in the gallery, we get so many people from, you know, all the terrestros that come here, people from the Bay Area, all over the place, actually. And they're surprised by the quality of the art in the gallery. And they love Cloverdale having art, that kind of art. They're, they love the Clover, you know, the, what's it called? The Sculpture Trail. It's, it just really looks good on our town. And the other thing, we are, we really advocate for Cloverdale in the gallery, because we seem to answer more questions about what is Cloverdale like, even than what is the art about, which is fine. It's wonderful, actually. So I just want to really put a vote in. I love the work you guys have been doing on this. And I also want to say, there are so many artists around here that are, you know, they're just kind of hiding in the bushes. And I think projects like this, like the community-centered projects in, art project in Windsor, is a fabulous model to consider, because it does draw the art out of the community. I think we, it's a great opportunity to showcase the kids and growing artists out of our children. And of course, I support that a lot. And there was one other thing, which I'm forgetting, but call upon the Cloverdale Arts Alliance. We can help out in some way. I hope so. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that'd like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Anyone else, if anything? Mayor? Councilmember?
Yeah. This is, it's really satisfying to see this come up. I actually brought this back from a Redwood Division meeting in Eureka in 2017. So, you know, it's only been eight years in the making. And, you know, the spirit behind the city of Eureka's Economic Development Director putting together a binder for us and a thumb drive with all the documents that we needed was really exactly what Laura just brought up, is that they were so interested in other cities being on a Redwood trail of art. Because I know, growing up as a kid, that that was one of our vacations about every other year, was going on a car trip up the coast. And Cloverdale, you know, it's always your first stop, because you got to go to the bathroom, and you got to get an ice cream. And then you, you know, go onto the One Tree Cabin, and, you know, you check out the sculptures, and then you get to Arcada in Eureka, and you have to put your jackets on, because it's been 9,500 degrees on the drive up there. And they're really interested in seeing communities join them, and that's why they shared this information. And unfortunately, kind of in the meantime, we've had, you know, two fires and a pandemic and lots of other things. But thankfully, the community has really risen up and said, you know, we want to see more public art, and we want to get the community involved. So I just really want to thank members of the community and Kevin for bringing this, you know, staying on, bringing, staying on this project and bringing it to the council tonight. And just another kind of little aside, is I contacted Savannah today just to kind of see about her support. And she said, oh, man, you know, oh, yeah, I totally forgot about it. I was in Glenwood Springs, Colorado this summer, and their utility boxes were all painted, too. And so it's just really, you know, I think, not just statewide, but nationwide. It's really becoming a trend. It's really a great way for communities to really support public art, to support art from kids. Just as far as the agenda report, I just want to see us maybe clarify that language, you know, maybe even at a subcommittee or at the council. And so I think that the function of the council here is really to set up the framework for, and so that it's very, very clear. It's just as clear as our Parks and Recreation website's going to be, right, Mike? Yeah. So just, so that it's very clear. This is the application process, and this is what it involves, you know, working with city-owned property. And then here's the framework for private ownership. And this is what the building owner needs to know. This is what the business owner needs to know. And here are the contracts that you, that you have with the artist, so that the art is maintained, and we have a reasonable expectation of what, of how long, you know, the pieces are going to last. I think a utility box, because it's metal, and it's, the temperatures vary so much with hot and cold, you need to maintain them a little bit longer. But as we've seen here in town, murals can last a long time. And that might be a longer-term relationship with the artist. But, you know, I think that our role as government is really to set up the information, like the list of the available places, the best practices, the contracts, and then walk away and let the community do what they do, let the artists do what they do, and let the property owners do what they do. So, and we can, we can just, we just can set up the model. I also think that once this framework is set up, the process should be as ministerial as possible. If people want to get involved and start a, you know, a mural contest and have competitions, let a nonprofit or a group do that. That's just, I don't think that, you know, we need to necessarily be in that business. So those would be my notes to staff as the structure that I'd like to see and have that bring back. I think it's our responsibility, set up the structure. And we have some really great models that we can copy and steal from, and then kind of back away. I also like the idea of working with this high school student who has this art project. I guess, you know, they've been referred to us by La Familia Sana. They have to get their homework done on time. It's got to be done in March. It's a project that's, you know, has to be turned in as their, to their teacher. So I'm pretty confident that there'd be some, you know, adult supervision involved. And I think it'd be a great idea for us to use this as a pilot project, so people can kind of see what the potential is. And I'd love to see the city offer one of our three sites to the students so that we can get the ball rolling and on their timeframe, so it works for them. And so I'd love to hear what the rest of the council thinks about some of those. And I think Kevin's got his work handed out, cut out for him to kind of get this done, hopefully by the next council meeting. hopefully by the next council meeting.
I just still want to stick with also reaching out to the Comcast and the PG&E, because there is a lot, and and get that nailed down. Get the, you know, and I agree, get between private and and city and kind of fine-tune this thing. Maybe bring, we could possibly even bring it back to a subcommittee, fine-tune a little bit, and then re-present it to council. And I think we'll be on track here. I'm, like I said, I'm all for this program. I'm also all for, I know when the mayor mentioned that we had, we didn't want to see, for instance, somebody come from the art program at the high school, and then they take off and they go to college. I think that if we coordinated with the with the school and that that would be maybe the art teacher at the school, we could ensure that that wouldn't happen. Maybe the next up-and-coming art student would come in, and they could be kind of on the hook, if you will, to maintain, if we decided to let them come in and take one of these utility boxes and put, put their mural on it, then that kind of becomes their utility box to come up and and do that. And I think our our teacher would probably go right along with that. But as as a whole, I'm all for this. I think this is a great project. We just need to fine-tune it a little bit. I said, bring it back to a subcommittee and bring it, you know, get the the things figured out on it, and then bring it back to council and see what they say.
I think that's a great idea, I swear. I think it would be a great, just to kind of identify maybe some of the boxes that we own, or maybe that the school owns, and says, hey, that belongs to the school, and it gets renewed every two to three years, something like that. I think that's a great idea. I think that the art teachers would be, I know Sarah would be thrilled by that, so.
Go ahead.
I think we should fine-tune the whole thing before we start accepting anyone to paint on a box, and everybody should have an equal chance to get a box rather than just, the student has a project. I mean, I'm glad they have a project, and that sounds great, but we're not kind of open for business yet.
Kevin, did you have some, something you wanted to say?
Well, I just, in the, in the interest of fine-tuning it, I mean, so do, is there support for a stipend?
Yeah, I just want to be very clear is that the the owner of the box should be offering the stipend, and we only have three, which isn't that much. So, I mean, I don't think that we should be in the business of paying people to paint other people's boxes, and that's something that's very clear in the in the Eureka program. I think probably the City of Windsor, if I were to guess, I bet they went out and got permission from twenty or so, you know, and then they applied their program. So I would, I would prefer to see that it's a relationship between the owner and the artist.
And just to kind of, if I can encapsulate that thought, I, I think what staff is hearing is that there's general support. I know, Mayor, you-
No, I want to go around the room because I don't think there is.
Okay.
I hear one, so if I want to-
Different.
Give everybody the chance because of this. Sorry.
There is, it, it, the kind of conversation on the on the stipend was to limit the stipend to the public boxes, not to provide a stipend to artists for private utility boxes. But the question still remains is, do you want to include? Because, again, the direction we heard from council is is to provide more clarity on the program, to kind of segregate public utility boxes from private utility boxes and then murals. So we we have the three categories within the program. And then the question would be, relative to the public boxes, is there a a stipend? And if there is a stipend, what amount is that for the public utility boxes?
So that's, that's the question we're on right now. I would like an answer for is the stipend portion. Councilmember Bag, we already gave hers in full support.
I think that, my opinion on the on the stipend is, I think we're giving the artist a platform to express themselves, and so as far as the stipend right now, I'm a no on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in favor of a stipend on all boxes, private or city. It has to be scaled down to the size of the box. There may be some boxes out there that are not owned by the city, but somebody wants to do a mural on it. If it's too small and doesn't fit into our program, I guess what I'm saying is, we should go around and select the boxes that, private, that we want a mural painted on. But yes, I think a reimbursed stipend, maybe up to $300, would encourage artists to come out and take on a project.
I think it would just be an honor to be able to get your artwork on a box, and I think maybe we should pay for materials and for the guard to protect it from graffiti. But I think it would just be an honor to get your artwork on the box. And, you know, if if we decide somewhere along the line that we do want to give the artists some money, maybe we could get, like, the Rotary Club to, you know, have one box where they support it, or the Lions Club to support it. But right now, I'd rather save money for more, well, not that art isn't important, because it is, but for other things.
And I'm a no on a stipend. So that's three. So the direction for the stipend is is a no at this point.
Just to clarify, the the other boxes in town that aren't ours, we're going to have to reach out and make sure that whoever owns those boxes is okay with it first, and maybe Derek can help with that. But there's, you know, the Comcast and the AT&amp;Ts of the world. So we got to make sure that they're going to be okay with this, and-
I think-
Have some contact with them, Derek.
Identifying the locations of the boxes that we don't own first, that way it's not just a blanket ask of-
Right.
An open-ended question of, you know, can we do any box that you own? So narrowing it down to the the specific locations that we don't own, so we can ask about those locations would be best.
Well, I just have a question, Mayor. Would the council be comfortable with this? I think that we're unnecessarily complicating the issue. First of all, if you own the box, you own the box. If you don't own the box, you don't own the box. If you want to pay the artist, you pay the artist. If you don't want to pay the artist, you tell them you're doing it for free. I think, unfortunately, we tell artists all the time that their their work isn't valued, and I think that that is really unfortunate. I would, I think that the city should stand by local art and say that, from an economic development perspective, people's work should be valued and it should be paid, even if they're a high school student. Their time deserves compensation. And I think that that's an important value that our, the Arts Alliance and the Chamber of Commerce would stand behind. I think that that's a community value, is that people's time and people's skill and people's craft is important, and it should be compensated. It doesn't have to be a lot of money. It doesn't have to be five hundred. I'd be comfortable with three hundred. But, you know, right now, we own three boxes. If we paid three hundred dollars, that'd be nine hundred dollars. I think that we probably could find the money from that, even in our difficult budget times. But that's a community value that that I think that we should be modeling for the rest of the community. But again, I think it's just very simple. What we should be doing is setting up, this is just like a sign policy. This is just saying what's allowed in city limits on utility boxes and on people's private walls outside of their buildings and on city walls where you could possibly have a mural. It's not any different than a sign policy or a policy about a sandwich board. And I think it just needs to be taken down to brass tacks in that sense. And much of that work has already been done for us. So I'd actually like to see us return a little bit more closely to the Eureka model, which is really a public-private partnership. What we're talking about here tonight, or, you know, is basically, what is our, what's our public art policy on on utility boxes and on the sides of buildings? Some of those are owned by the city. Some of them are owned by the property owners. Some of them are owned by Comcast and AT&amp;T. What we should be doing as a city is just inventorying those, providing those, and then providing guidelines. If we choose to pay the artist for the city-owned property, then that's what we choose to do. Or if we vote not to provide a stipend, then that's what we choose to do. But I think it's important that we provide the functional framework so that a property owner can say, hey, what's allowed and what's it going to cost me? And maybe I want to, you know, pay a certain amount to an art student, but maybe I want to hire a professional artist and pay them more. They can update the contract template to reflect the quality of the artist that they're engaging in a contract with. And again, these model contracts that we already have in a packet have stipulations for the length of the contract and the maintenance that the artist is required for the, to perform for the entire length of the contract. This is not unlike us purchasing a sign for your business. So I think we need to just simplify it, get down to brass tacks, and set up the the structure so that it's easy for us to have a private partnership, private, public-private partnership. And I think it's proper for the council to say, we're going to be the first up to bat, and we're going to work with this artist who has has come forward, and we're going to do a a pilot model. I think that that's, you know, we need to take risks in government to have success. We need to lead the way for the community, and I'd really like to see us do that tonight.
Do you have any other questions, Kevin?
I think we have these, these questions answered. I'll, I'll work on it. What you, what you guys provided, provided direction and bring it back to the, is that the direction, to bring it back to the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee?
Yeah. I just want to note that the next subcommittee meeting date is April 16th, which it, I heard the timeline for the student project, and if that's a consideration of meeting that, then we'd need to consider a special, a special meeting.
Well, is, would it be all right to just make a motion tonight, get the review from council? You know, we have a high school student who is willing to give us a pilot. They're recommended by the staff at La Familia Sana. They're going to be working under the direction of a high school art teacher. We can take a a vote tonight whether or not to allow it on one of the city-owned boxes. And if if it's all right to make a motion, I'd be happy to offer that.
If, I mean, if a motion is made, it's obviously staff will take direction.
No, it's not on here as an action item.
So it's, it's, it's direction to continue to explore. I mean, we would have to-
We, we, no, that's not direction to explore. We, on the box, the city, we are, we are the elected officials of the community of Cloverdale. This is not a big risk. But we've got a student who's got a project and needs to get her homework done on time, and we need an opportunity to do a a proof of concept. So, you know, we have the authority tonight to direct the use of one of our pieces of property, and maybe just leave it up to staff to work with the student and to find the the best location to do that. And if there isn't support in the council to trust, you know, in that, then they can, they're, the the motion will fail, and it, we'll have to tell the student no tonight.
Question? Please. Thank you. I guess I would be okay with that, providing that staff did a full detail on what the mural would look like, in which box it would be put on. But, of course, you'd have to approve that, Kevin, David. Okay? And I think you know what the council does not want on those boxes.
I totally disagree. I think it should be, like, people should apply, and we should pick out of a group whose art we want. And this student shouldn't just get the green light because they have a homework assignment. They can pick another homework assignment. And like I said, we're, you know, we still need to refine the rules and regulations, and we're not there yet to let this one particular student, who we don't even know what their artworks are like-
I think that we're kind of almost putting the cart in front of the horse here. I'm wondering if we're even legally allowed to do this under the direction.
And I could, I can answer that. So the the agenda is review draft city art program and provide direction on the proposed implementation city art program. So if the council wanted to say, we're providing the implementation, staff, you go implement something, we don't need to see it, you go staff and implement it. You've heard kind of what direction or what we want to see, then that's under the agenda. As Councilmember Bag, we mentioned, you know, the risk is somebody says, wait a minute, it should have been on here, is it coming back? But it is implementation, and it does say implementation-
Because I was going under the options, and it where it said, provide direction and request staff to return with an adopting resolution. So I wanted to just make sure that we're, that we can.
Or provide, provide alternative direction to city staff.
Okay.
And if it's, look, we don't want to see it.
Okay.
If if staff is implementing something on their own, again, the, 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 the risk is always somebody saying, wait, we always thought it was going to come back.
Well, I'll just point out that Kevin reviews multimillion-dollar projects, and it compares into our general plan on the daily, on a daily basis, and I trust him.
The oversight part doesn't scare me. It's just making sure we're doing it the correct way here. So with your guidance, I'll-
It's also our property.
We have a motion.
It's also our, it's all, I'll just point out also, it's our property. And is it not, Jose? It's our municipal property.
It is, but I think that the, that the issue was on how it's agendized.
Sure.
I think if it was agendized, what, you know, here's, here's, what do you want to do with the property so we could implement it?
I don't want someone else saying we played favorites-
Oh, certainly.
And did this wrong.
And I actually don't even know the students, so I don't know how I can play favorites. But-
We might have a nonprofit out here that has the grant money, and I don't, if we turn them down, then we could be in trouble for something because we didn't give them that opportunity.
I, I have to, I have to work in facts. I'm trying to work in facts.
And Mayor, members of council, if I, if I can, maybe to kind of address, I think, where the little discord amongst council on how we move this forward. I, I think, in general, I hear support for a program coming forward. I, I think council does want us to clarify some points and and amend the guidelines to kind of better reflect council's intent here, as in noting the difference in the the public utilities and the private utilities. So I think from that perspective, we, we do want to bring something back. Ultimately, with staff's perspective, we, we want council to support a, a policy and give us clear direction on what that policy is by adopting it. But we're also hearing the interest in, as a pilot program for one utility box, if council supports that, moving forward and giving staff direction. So, you know, I don't know if council supports that.
And is that, is that clear? Is that, is that-
Absolutely. That sounds great to me.
Perfect. So then we have a motion on the table. No, there is not yet. Does anyone want to second this?
Second.
There we go. All right. So we have a motion and a second. I'm going to open it up to the public one more time in case anyone would like to speak on this, since it's changed the direction. So, so I'm, I'm going to allow, because it is a whole new topic on this, really. Please.
Sarah Hagan again. It sounds like there's a couple different things that are going on. My understanding originally when I read this was that there's the, the city's agenda to do your own electoral boxes and your own murals. How is that for somebody like myself or La Familia Sana? If we have an artist and we have money and we want to pay them, how do we do that? And I feel like that's kind of what is not being discussed at all.
Hold on.
That's everything I'm discussing, but maybe staff wants to address that, because that's what we, that's what we are trying to address.
Okay, okay. So the, as far as I know, when I was talking with Jade earlier today, her art, the girl that she has, they can fund it. They can pay for it. It doesn't have to be on a city box. It does, it can be on any box. We're looking for a way to be able to get the project done. How are we able to do a permit? Because there's, when we first went to the city planning meeting months back, there wasn't any process for it. So we've been kind of waiting and waiting and waiting to see when there was going to be a permit in place so that we could then start doing applications and start getting the artwork done. So if the money is there, the artists are there, and the spots are there, we just need to figure out how to get it there.
Which is, I'm sorry, is that the end of your public comments?
I think that's exactly what we're talking about here.
That's exactly what we're talking about, is-
And I, and I think we're kind of getting hung up because we have the poss, the, you know, we have property that the city owns, and then we have property that everybody else owns. And I think that the, you know, the, the way that the model that Eureka set up was that a framework for everybody, and whether it's city-owned or it's privately owned. And it's just, it's basically just the same guidelines that you'd have if you were to put a sign on your business. That's, that's what-
Right. So what we-
And the stipend, the, yeah, the stipend part, Kevin, do you want to address that as far as, because, yeah, we, we actually have all of this paperwork.
I'll, I'll, I'll do this. So basically, what happened, we don't want, I don't want, or we said, the council doesn't want to pay the stipend for the artist. Privately, you can do anything you want. Simple as that.
Okay, so there's permits that are in place for us to be able to do-
It's how much money would come out of city versus, to pay for that person versus private is up to you.
Perfect. Okay.
All right. So we have a motion and a second on the table. The comment is done. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And we will move on and ask if there's anyone else who'd like to make a public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any further comments on this motion that we have, which covers not only for the single artist from the high school, but also covers the direction that is given to bring it back for the, or to the Planning and Sustainability?
Can we separate them and make two different motions? Because-
I did. I actually made a motion strictly for the utility box, that a utility, making of a utility box that we own available. That was my, my motion. And then, and if someone else can make a, I'm, I'm happy to make a separate motion. But that was my original- So my, if I want to restate my motion, it was that we've been told by Assistant City Manager Kelly that the city has three available boxes because of the timeline. We, I'm offering to make one available as a pilot project for an artist that has already been identified locally as a proof of concept, and I believe there, that was the motion, and then there was a second.
So then, for the rest of it, there's nothing at this point. All right. So we have a first, second, public, we're done. Go ahead and go with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
No.
Councilmember Walter?
No.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
No.
Mayor Lantz?
No.
One to four, motion fails. Do we want to provide direction on the proposed implementation of the art program?
Well, I think we did. We gave back constructive feedback. I think staff has their marching orders, and they're going to bring it to a subcommittee and then back to the city council.
Perfect. Is there anything else to add to that?
No, I just wanted to say, I thought, the direction was, I thought we were in agreement here that we were going to bring it back to Planning and Sustainability.
Correct.
Fine-tune this with all the comments included here, and then come back and present it to council after that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any questions for us, David or Kevin? Thank you. All right, we're going to skip back up to F, Presentations, F1, the promotional introductions. I will let Chief run through them one by one as he chooses.
Thank you, Mayor. Ricky Rhodes, come on up there, please. Officer Ricky Rhodes was selected to be our School Resource Officer. He has over 12 years of law enforcement experience, holds an associate of science degree from the Butler Community College. He's been married for almost 20 years and is a father of four. He's, at the Cloverdale Police Department, he has participated in numerous speaking engagements, including neighborhood watch events, adult protective services presentations, and fraud training programs for the vulnerable groups. Throughout his career, Ricky has held various positions and performed multiple duties, including range master, firearms instructor, taser instructor, field training officer, SAR board member for the school. He's done dare and great instruction, canine training agitator, licensed drone pilot, inlets instructor, tribal probation, tribal court, bailiff, training scheduler and coordinator, and was responsible for writing and managing grants as well as maintaining the department's schedule. In recognition of his exceptional work, Ricky has received several awards, including Officer of the Year at both Cloverdale Police Department and the Hoplum Reservation Police Department. He is also honored as an Employee of the Year for the Hoplum Tribe and received the lifesaver commendation and recognition from the American Red Cross. In addition, if that's not enough, in addition, he was the recipient of the CHP MAT Award for DUI enforcement and received nine leading edge awards from Cessna Aircraft Company for his outstanding work performance, and he used to work for Cessna. That is Officer Ricky Rhodes. He's also a coach. He likes to bowl. I tell him that's not a real sport, but he loves to do it, and we're happy that he's going to be our SRO Officer. I'll be presenting something to the finance and MMA police to get that program started on Monday. Officer Ricky Rhodes.
Thank you.
Don't leave yet. Don't walk away yet. Nothing to say?
Nothing.
Over 10 years, we've been trying to get this position. It's been a fight. So thank you for making it happen, and thank you for getting them in the classrooms. Thank you. Katie Venoni. Kenny Venoni was selected to be our detective. She has earned a degree in criminal justice for the SRJC and Sonoma State. She has served as a probation officer in Mendocino County for a period of three years. She has successfully completed her training at the SRJC Police Academy in 2015, and in 2016, she joined the Cloverdale Police Department and has since accumulated eight years of experience in the field. Throughout her tenure, Officer Venoni has diligently worked on and overseen the resolution of 700 cases. She also executed various search warrants and collaborated with agencies such as the FBI, DEA, probation, and DEA investigators. As a devoted member of the multi-agency incident response team, she notably assisted the Tally Police Department in a murder investigation. In addition to her duties, Officer Venoni serves as a peer support counselor and a field training officer. And I just want to kind of tell you what the caliber of her investigations recently. Sacramento DA's office put out a press release on one of the cases she worked on. Often, we have to take cases because sometimes victims live here and the incident occurred in another jurisdiction, and in this case, that's what happened, where she took the initial investigation and forwarded it to that jurisdiction for follow-up where the suspect lived and where the crime occurred. This subject was, I won't give out names, but he committed sexual assault on a Meyer on numerous occasions on several females. He's currently looking in face, he's being sentenced, currently looking at facing 102 years, 102 years in prison. These cases she continually works on and is an outstanding officer, and I'm proud of her. Everybody probably knows John Kamara. He has an impressive 24-year tenure here at the Cloverdale Police Department. That's pretty good. Where he has various roles and responsibilities throughout his career. He has served as the Department Gang Officer, Tactical Rifle Instructor, Field Training Officer, Use of Force, Deeskalation Instructor, Acting Sergeant, and Canine Officer. Over the span of 15 years as a Canine Officer, Sergeant Kamara has worked with two highly specialized canines. His involvement in numerous drug investigations and led to several hundreds of thousands in U.S. currency seizures, as well as thousands of pounds of narcotics. Additionally, he has worked, he has resulted in apprehending wanted individuals and confiscating illegal weapons. Sergeant Kamara has actively partaken in county-wide operations, including gang, probation, and wanted person sweeps. Furthermore, he has collaborated with federal organizations such as ATF, FBI, DEA, DOJ, and Homeland Security, along with local agencies in Sonoma County and Mendocino County, to work on cases and execute warrants. In addressing the challenges posed by the homeless population, Sergeant Kamara has undertaken the responsibility of establishing consistent interaction to identify their needs and concerns. He has demonstrated proactive collaboration with local government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and social service providers to devise and implement strategies targeting homelessness and related issues. Through these efforts, his aim to foster and save community while advocating for the well-being of those without stable housing. When you guys give me direction on, or bring up a concern with an housed individual, he's the guy that I turn to to go out and deal with that, and every time, he resolves the problem. I give you Sergeant Kamara, and we'll do the OSA Office.
Do we do pitches?
I think we should, yeah, absolutely. He's going to do his OSA Office real quick for the new position.
You know you're giving a speech after this?
No.
He doesn't like speaking.
I state your name?
I, John Kamara.
Do you solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance?
Bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will, and faithfully?
That I will and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon?
Discharge the duties upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Right, thanks. Thank you.
Chief, after the family photos are done, can we all do one together with the council?
I've seen Rick run across all the time. He lives across the street, and I text him, I'm like, Rick Rhodes? And I'm like, are you, that's real, I haven't, are you going to be there tonight? And he's like, because I was like, wow, I'm leaving, and you're going to be late.
Soon as they're all done.
You're going to have it for weeks.
I had it two weeks ago.
Oh, yeah? It hangs with you.
All right, moving on to I-2, agreement with Redwood Public Law LLP for legal services. That might be a good idea. No advice here. David, is this you?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is I-2 on the agenda, is an agreement with Redwood Public Law Group LLP for legal services. A little bit of background, our current city attorney is the firm of Myers-Nave. Myers-Nave, also known as Myers-Nave, Rebeck, Silver, and Wilson, has, was hired by the city back in 1993, so they've served as our primary city attorney for nearly, well, over 30 years now. In about 2002, Eric Danley served as our city attorney. Many of you remember, I know Gus Walter will, Councilmember Walter remembers, our previous city attorney. And with his retirement, or resignation, excuse me, in 2013, we entered into a new agreement in 2012, where, at which time, our current city attorney, Jose Sanchez, was appointed as our city attorney. He has dutifully served the city since that time, and starting in approximately 2021, Alex Mog, who has served as our deputy city attorney under the direction of Mr. Sanchez, has also provided legal services to the city. Jose, along with a team of other municipal law-focused attorneys, including Deputy Attorney Mog, have established a new law firm. The new, the new firm is going to be effective March 15th, with the mission of providing specific legal services to public entities and municipalities like the city of Cloverdale. The new law firm is referred to as Redwood Public Law LLP. Mr. Sanchez, our city attorney, is a partner in that group, and is proposed to continue serving as special counsel for municipalities like the city. As part of this change, we're proposing to appoint Mr. Mog as our city attorney. Mr. Mog has the requisite background, experience, and I like to say, legal acumen to serve in that role. We've very much appreciated working with Mr. Jose, Mr. Sanchez as our city attorney, but likewise, we've enjoyed our working relationship with Mr. Mog. While Myers-Nave has provided legal services for a number of years, the council did express support for moving to this new law group. We think this would ease the transition by sticking with our existing attorneys that have provided service to us for many years. Included in your packet is a resolution that would authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Redwood Public Law Group to provide legal services to the city. In addition, that resolution would also formally appoint Mr. Mog as our city attorney effective March 15th, when the new, the new firm takes effect. In terms of financial impact on the city, I think the cost of legal services, I should note, are included in our city budget. Jose and Alex have always been mindful of our budget constraints in Cloverdale, and for the most part, have always come in within budget. The rate schedule that has been provided is substantially similar to the existing rate schedule, so we don't expect necessarily any increase or significant changes in legal expenses, though, just to note that there may be, in some instances, need for outside counsel, which is really no different than there is now, which may have different rates. The recommendation tonight is to proceed with, the staff's recommendation is to proceed with adopting the resolution, which would again approve the agreement for legal services with Redwood Public Law LLP, and formally appoint Alex Mog as our, as our, as our city attorney. So I'll kind of pause there. Both Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Mog are in the audience tonight and may want to offer a few words for the council's consideration.
Would you like to offer a few words, or would you like to answer any questions or concerns that come up? All right, I kind of figured that. Councilmember Morganstern? Nothing? Okay. Councilmember Walter?
Well, no questions. I think I've had all of them answered with Jose over the last couple of weeks, but, you know, I'm in favor of making the move. You know, Myers-Nave is a name, but Jose and Alex are our attorneys. We've had a long relationship with Jose, and I know Alex is going to do an excellent job with the city of Cloverdale, and he's always got Jose to fall back on, so I'm in favor of moving it forward.
Couldn't have said it any better. Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah, I have a question for our Alex and/or Jose. You know, one of the things that has been an advantage of working with Myers-Nave has been the exhaustive number of departments and resources that we could call on. And I think one of the, just as an example, one of the really big benefits has been the expertise in the firm regarding water. We're going to be, we are currently undergoing, you know, major shifts in our region and across the state on how water is regulated, and I was just wondering, I know you'll be focusing on, you know... And I was just wondering, I know you'll be focusing on municipal law, but, you know, what kind of resources will you have in-house, or will you be able to call on with, you know, some of the really big issues, especially as, you know, regarding the Potter Valley Project, the dam removals along Eel and Russian? And, you know, what kind of resources can we look to you to be able to bring in? And then, you know, what are the areas that I'm not asking about that you're still going to be able to, you know, call on for expertise that's outside your, you know, your particular specialties?
Thank you for the question. So regarding specialties, it's not just going to be us. The law firm, we actually, there's eight of us partners that are starting this law firm. We have all of our group attorneys, all of our attorneys have also joined us already. So we, within the attorneys that are joining the firm, we actually have the specialties like land use. We do a lot of land use, housing. Alex, for example, as you know, is one of our experts in housing and real estate. So we do plan and have those expertise, I should say, in-house or with the firm. Regarding water, that is a specialty, that there's firms that just dedicate themselves to just water. Currently, one of the approaches is, we have other jurisdictions in Sonoma County as well. We're currently now discussing between the city attorneys, how to best serve kind of this more of a county-wide, it's really the region, issue. So those conversations are happening now as to whether, we do have some folks that have some water expertise, but whether for this type of project, we would need to, as a region, looking for other kind of, other expertise, that, other experts that just do water, and that's it.
Just the only other thing I noticed on attachment to page six, there might be a typo, if you wanted to.
We'll definitely make sure that Alex fixes that.
And I think, I think if you look toward the end of the page, you'll see what I'm talking about. Might be the name of another city. So there you go. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I have, same with Councilmember Walter over there. I've talked to you guys over the last couple of weeks, and I'm willing to move forward. I think it's gonna be a great move.
I too am willing to move forward, and I also agree it will be a great move, and it's just gonna be a win-win situation for all of us, for you and for us.
I'll open it up to the public. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Anyone that would like to make a?
I'd like to make a motion, and as much as I would like to razz our city attorney, I think he's been under enough stress lately. And I just want to acknowledge Alex and Jose and your team, and just kind of just say how proud I am of you to make this change. I think it's gonna be really great for your career. I think it's gonna be great for the cities that, who are your clients, and so I'm just, I'm honored to offer the resolution.
Do you want to read it?
Happy to read the title. Resolution to the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving an agreement for legal services between the city of Cloverdale and Redwood Public Law LLP, and appointing Alex Mog as the city attorney.
All right. You ready, Michael?
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 5-0, and I look forward to it. Thank you, guys. Moving on to subcommittee reports. Is there anything anyone would like to talk about that has gone on in a subcommittee? Seeing none, all subcommittee agendas and minutes are available on the website at www.cloverdale.net. We'll move on to the legislative reports and the letter of support. David?
Well, Mayor, real quick, just on subcommittees, I wanted to mention that we are working on a special meeting of the Homeless Community Advisory Group on March 18th.
Okay.
This is to have a...
That's gonna be a special meeting?
...by legal aid. And the city clerk reminded me that our next meeting of the finance, admin, and police we normally hold at City Hall is scheduled for the EOC meeting room at the Cloverdale Fire District.
Perfect, thank you. I hadn't seen that come out yet, so appreciate it.
You know that someone will go to the wrong place, right? You know someone will go to the wrong site. Just, just, just saying.
We did develop a meeting notice. We know there's a lot of interested mobile home residents within the community. Kevin Thompson provided a copy of the meeting notice to one of our local residents who agreed to disseminate it to the residents, so that they're aware of the, well, both the meeting and what the discussion topic, which is the Mobile Home Rent Control Ordinance, along with the date, time, and location of the meeting at the firehouse.
Thank you. Want to talk about the RACE support letter?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So included in your packet is a copy of a letter of support signed by Mayor Lance in support of a collaborative application that was filed between the County of Sonoma, SMART, our Sonoma area rail transit district, and the city of Cloverdale for a Department of Transportation RACE grant. RACE stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. The proposed program that we're seeking funding for is referred to as Connecting Cloverdale to the Bay Equitable Transportation Access and Resilience Project. This application is for $13.5 million to fund a number of critical improvements, including the permanent bridge over the Russian River at Osti, this would replace the Summer Bridge, along with various improvements to support SMART's path to Cloverdale from Healdsburg, along with a number of pedestrian and transportation improvements and microtransit projects that would serve the city of Cloverdale. So I want to acknowledge the incredible work that Ms. Parker, Joanne Parker at SMART, put into submitting our application, and I want to thank the mayor for signing on. We've got quite a list of supporters for our grant application. Our, I know our representative in Congress, Congressman Huffman, is also submitted a letter of support, and so I think we do have tremendous support by all of our legislators, but a long host of local groups, including the Cloverdale School District for this funding. So this application was submitted today, and fingers crossed, it'll be viewed favorably by the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, David. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick, just a quick comment. Yeah, thanks for including the letter in the packet, and thank you for including the whole submission in an email to council. I actually took time to review the entire packet today, and I just want to commend the team effort in pulling this together. But, you know, as David did, and thank you so much for recognizing the work of Joanne Parker. She's the Grant and Legislative Affairs Manager at SMART, who, she really crafted the tragedy that, or the tragedy, hopefully it's not gonna be a tragedy, hopefully it's gonna be a success. She crafted the strategy of really pulling the three applications together, because we really didn't have a hope of, if all of us were applying, none of us were gonna get it. When we apply together and really show the benefit of the community, it really reflects the name, and thanks for, you know, spelling out the name of the acronym of the grant. It's Rebuilding America with Sustainability and Equity, and if one thing that North County has always lacked is really adequate representation on sustainability and equity. We just have not gotten our fair share, and honestly, the way that this grant came together and what Joanne did, and her depth of, her deep reach into the community, you know, without Joanne, she has these community relationships that she's like fostered over the years, and her deep professional knowledge, it's what has made her one of the most successful grant writers that I know of, and possibly in California. And she's recognized as that by agencies who work with her, and I hope that she's appreciated locally, and I know she's appreciated at SMART. But she just crafts these successful grants and creates these relationships. This also wouldn't have happened without, you know, our great staff, City Manager Kelly, just saying, "What can we do to pull this together?" And then, of course, Johannes Hovert's at Sonoma County Transportation and Public Works, and Adrian Venoni-Gurialdi, and they're grant writer. They just pulled together and said, "What can we do to get a successful grant for North County and for Cloverdale?" And it really represents a sea change from, you know, even five years ago, of how agencies work together in Sonoma County, and especially to bring resources to northern Sonoma County. I mean, we're really getting incredible representation, and we're just seeing great staff work. The other piece of it, too, is that I know that a couple of people got sick, and a lot of this got dumped in Joanne's lap, a lot of the heavy lifting got done for her, by her. None of this would happen if we didn't have supportive families who let our staff and our, even sometimes our elected officials, if we didn't have our families supporting us so that they could do the work, this kind of work that's gonna have an impact in this area for generations to come. And even if this grant, God forbid, isn't successful, the groundwork and the framework that was established, that really showed what the need is and what the value is, it's gonna set us up for success for other grants and for other programs. So I just want to thank Joanne, make sure she gets acknowledged for the hero work she did, City Manager Kelly, Johannes, and Adrian, and their staffs. They just did an amazing job, and, you know, knock on wood, it's gonna be a successful application.
Anyone else? City manager report.
Mayor, Councilmembers, just a, I want to do a quick report that, kind of on the same theme of collaboration, city staffs working with the Sonoma County Department of Public Infrastructure on collaborating on a local road improvement project. The County Department of Public Infrastructure puts out their list annually of local road improvement projects. Around Cloverdale, they identified that they are going to improve Clovercrest Drive. We indicated our interest in collaborating with them on having their work include the portion of Clovercrest Drive that's within the city, specifically looking at the portion starting at the Boulevard West to the county line, and they've given, they've provided pricing for that. I think it's very fair. We're looking at about $117,000 based on their pricing to repave that section of Clovercrest. It's...
Sorry, Dave, 117 or 170?
117.
117, thanks.
And that's $114,000 for paving and about $3,000 for lifting the utility boxes, and it's a fair share allocation of the costs. Ultimately, we'll be bringing that back to council to get your support, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that, you know, again, I think it's something council has expressed in the past, is a desire for us to, you know, collaborate and work with our partners, and this is a continued example of building on that collaborative working relationship, and it's great to have a public works director like Johannes in place who's willing to do that. So more to come on that. I just wanted to report that that's in progress, and we'll be bringing that forward.
Thank you, David. City manager? I'm sorry, city attorney?
Mayor, members of the council, I do have to say thank you. I'm humbled with your support, and I will tell you that I'm very proud of being your city attorney since 2013. It's been something that's meant a lot to me. You can't get rid of me, I'm still gonna be your special counsel when issues come up, but I'm also very proud to work with somebody like Alex, and to have him be a city attorney, and be able to transition, and have him also have your trust to allow the transition to happen. I'm sure he's gonna do a fabulous job. He's a great attorney, and he's a great person. But again, I just wanted to say thank you again, and again, I'm not going anywhere. I'm still, I'm still available. Anything you need, please give me a call.
Thank you, sir. All right, councilmember reports. Anything? Go ahead.
I just wanted to give, we just, the northern Sonoma County Airport down there in Healdsburg has been leasing that building that they've been in for, I don't know how many years. It was always a lease option to buy, and then things happened, and people couldn't figure out if they wanted to sell it or whatever. But the, they do have, we've called a special meeting coming up on the 7th of March, and they do have a property that they're looking at purchasing. It looks like it's gonna go through. It's 625 Center down in Healdsburg. We, last meeting we looked at it, it's a really nice property for them, and then that will be their permanent location, so that's what's going on with that.
Councilmember Bagby, anything besides your written?
I'd like to say thank you to the Cloverdale staff for all your hard work at the Citus Fair. I know it's not our event. However, I know there's a lot of last-minute snafus, and Kevin Thompson, David, everybody, you guys stepped up and helped, and our town is thankful for that. Derek, for sure. So thank you, guys. I know you were all out there early and fielding those phone calls and making things happen, so thank you.
All right, any direction on future agenda items? I think maybe whenever you're ready with your town hall ideas, David, and the other option, or other idea of the presenter. We already have those on, so whenever you get them. I'm sorry, clarification, presenter for the Potter Valley Project that we discussed already. Just want to make sure it doesn't get lost in the weeds, and David and I already talk about it on a weekly basis. Seeing nothing else? All right, nothing good for the order? We'll adjourn at 7:43. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.